Good morning, everybody. I'd like to go ahead and kick this meeting off. Welcome to the Warren County Board of Supervisors meeting. This morning, today's date is Tuesday, July 11th, 2023. It's 9:30 a.m., and we're in the Warren County Board of Supervisors room. I'd like to start the day with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we get, are there any agenda deletions or additions? Okay, the first item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented items A through L.
Second.
We have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. Item number two is a continuation of a public hearing for rezoning application for lands from A-1 agricultural districts to C-2 general commercial highway service district as submitted by Cody Sinclair representing Inception Group LLC. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning. This is a continuation of the first public hearing that was held before you on June 6th. Inception Group is asking for 41.5 acres of ground to be rezoned from A-1 agricultural to C-2 highway service commercial use for outdoor storage. At that meeting, you had asked for some additional information. Inception Group has provided a wetland and stream map and a wetland delineation study. I did provide that in your packet. I just thought I'd give you a quick rundown how the zoning commission voted that night. They voted to approve the recommendation to rezone from A-1 to C-2, subject to screening either by fence or vegetation. Four members of the vote voted in favor of that, and Douglas Rooney voted against that. He, at that time, he felt that the project was rushed. So, like I said, they have provided a couple of additional maps with the wetland and stream and the delineation. Can't speak this morning. So, and Inception Group is here to speak and answer questions for you.
I don't have any questions at this time. I don't have any.
Thank you.
Do you have questions for Inception Group? Okay. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I think procedurally, aren't we still in the public hearing? Or are we, have we closed the public hearing?
Continuation of a public hearing. So do we need to make a motion?
Yeah. We didn't go into open.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go into a public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Rule call.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That's a good call. So now we're in a public hearing. So is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this rezoning matter? Do you want to come up and state your reasons? And your name and address, please.
Anne Githens, 8966 143rd Street, Indianola, Iowa, 50125. I'm just, my problem is with the water, you know, the resources, and it's going to affect our property. It butts up to our property. And just everything that we said at the last meeting. And there's not any more farm ground out there. You're giving away our farm ground for commercial.
Okay.
But I understand their idea of wanting to make profit. But sometimes we got to give, figure out where food's going to come from. But I assume you're going to approve it, and if that's your choice, that's your choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to talk on this matter? Come on forward. Name and address, please.
Ryan Nelson, address 14231 Harding Trail. I'm here on behalf of myself and as well as my neighbor Nathan Stevie. He is directly north of me. I don't have his address. But biggest question we have, and one thing, is the outdoor storage, anything else and stuff. How large of a parking lot are we going to put in? Couple acres, three, four, maybe five? Why are we rezoning 40 acres without a plan for the other 30-some? And stuff. I mean, maybe rezone for the parking lot they want and everything else and stuff. They can make some money. They can do what they want to do at that point. But they've got to have a better plan before they get a rezone, a whole 40 acres and anything else and stuff when, I don't know what the plan is. I don't know if you guys do or not. I don't know if they even know the plan yet. But it just seems they're putting the cart ahead of the horse.
Okay.
And that's very worrisome for anyone whose property backs up anywhere near this. Because if this first step goes, how fast is it going to snowball? Next thing you know, everything's going to get changed. My property's going to be in a floodplain. There's going to be all sorts of other issues, just because it wasn't, they didn't take their time and think it through. That's my biggest concern.
Okay.
So, appreciate you guys hearing me.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to leave public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Okay, so I've heard from the public, and we appreciate that. The objections, I mean, there's still some questions around water mitigation and water management. And also a concern relative to converting agricultural production ground into commercial ground. Is there anybody from zoning or that would like to address those issues? Or anybody from Inception Group?
My name is Gene Mercer. Address is 17439 120th Avenue. Yeah, so the 40 acres we're currently trying to zone into C-2, actually only a small portion of that is farmable due to the terrain currently. So we're not really taking a lot of ag currently out of what we're trying to get zoned currently into C-2. As far as the broader scheme of the whole site plan, there is, you can look it up, and you guys have been submitted that, a breakdown of commercial lots versus smaller home lots and then executive lots. So it is, it's not like we just bought this and all of a sudden decided we were just going to throw this together. We actually have the piping put in place, you know, a pumping station coordinating with that. I mean, it's, we've been spending some time and money in trying to develop the whole thing as a whole. So the fact that, you know, we're not really just spitballing here. We're actually spending some hard-earned money to get it developed and develop it right with management of water and with the terrain and everything like that, so.
I do have a question for you. Related to the plan, which I appreciate all the work that you've done here to go forward and try to answer some of the questions.
Yep.
Is the intention to eventually have this area be annexed into the city of Indianola?
So we have talks with the city, obviously, because we're within the two-mile range, so we have to kind of get their approval on things as well. So, I don't know, no way to bring up the whole thing, but the bike trail kind of cuts the property in half down through here. And currently, basically, Charlie says they have future plans to annex the, everything west of the bike trail. It's in their future expansion. It's already in place. I couldn't tell you when they plan on doing that. I don't, I couldn't tell you if we're going to be the trigger that processes that or not. They said they have no interest, obviously, east of the bike trail.
Right. My question goes one step further, too.
Sure.
The reason I'm bringing this up is because we're having a lot of other conversations related to rezoning and land use for the whole county. And we've been talking specifically about the lands that are closest to the cities in the county and making sure that those are congruous to the plans that are going on with the city for annexation. Because at some point in time, it doesn't make sense for the county to be the one that's overseeing these types of developments. So that's why I'm raising the question, is because the greater conversation that we're having as a whole, as a county, with what is the intention? Does, is this going to meet the standards for annexation at some point into the city of Indianola?
And actually, yeah, we submitted these plans to the city, too, the full plans, and Charlie's, he was very happy with exactly what we did with their commercial to multi-use to executive. So, yeah, that was actually, they didn't have anything specifically planned out there, but then we submitted that, and now they're kind of adapting what we submitted into that future expansion.
What was your process for the water mitigation? Did you have, is there like a certified supplier that's meeting all the codes and regulations around water mitigation?
Yeah, so Snyder and Associates submitted the whole water delineation to the Army Corps of Engineers, and they're obviously going through the process now to get that all approved and submitted. So it's already been submitted to the, to the state, and the Army Corps of Engineers were, in the next week or so, we should have the full plan approved.
You already know you're going to be like moving some lagoons or shifting some kind of water runoff areas. I mean, you're already in the works of.
Yes. So topographical maps pretty much show and everything's kind of flowing. There's a kind of a pork shop-shaped pond. So as far as changing any current water, natural flows or anything like that, we're not. We're using the terrain to our advantage out there and flowing everything currently into its existing flow lines and flows.
Okay.
And then, you know, once, like I said, if future expands with the development, if it requires an additional holding pond or anything like that, that'll all be given to us within the water delineations and control plans. So at this time, nothing, like I said, nothing back there is, we're not touching it, still in farm ground. Will continue to be in farm ground.
So is that the 75-page report that you submitted to DNR?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't have any other questions for Gene.
Yep.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Anybody else from the public, or I guess we're out of public session. Anybody else from zoning or from the developers that would like to discuss this this time? Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the rezoning application for lands from A-1 agricultural district to C-2 general commercial highway services as submitted by Cody Sinclair representing Inception Group LLC.
Second.
Do you want to read the second and third?
Yes, I'd like to include waiving the second and third reading into my motion.
Agreed.
You'll second that?
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. So that has been approved. The third item on our agenda is a public hearing for rezoning application for land from A-1 agricultural district to C-2 general commercial highway service district as submitted by LRG Holdings, Ryan Gray. So. Miranda, you want to go into a public meeting right away?
Yes, please.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go to a public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. We're now in a public meeting.
Ryan Gray of LRG Holdings at 1098 50th Avenue, Pearl, Iowa, is asking to rezone approximately 9.92 acres of ground from A-1 agricultural to C-2 general commercial highway service district for a building to be built for nine offices. There's a little back history about this project. Ryan Gray had applied for a building permit in June of 2022 for an office to be used for himself, his wife, and one employee. He is affiliated with the Goodfeet store. He started that, stated that this business would not be open to the general public. Environmental health received a permit application for a three-bedroom home from Mr. Gray. And then on February 22nd of 2023, Mr. Gray presented a site plan to our office, and that indicated that there would be eight offices, a meeting room, a kitchenette, and restrooms. So the zoning office then determined that Mr. Gray would need to rezone to C-2 commercial. Mr. Gray appealed that decision to the Warren County Board of Adjustment on February, I'm sorry, on April 13th of 2023. The Board of Adjustment upheld our decision and voted that from three to one. So due to that decision, then it went before the zoning commission on, in June, and then they voted in favor of that. Staff recommendation was approval of the rezoning application. At the night of the zoning commission meeting, there was one member from the public that was in favor of the rezoning application, and that was Anthony Yonan. He lives across the street from Mr. Gray. Lindsay talked with the city of Martinsdale, kind of asked them their, if they would expand, which direction that they would plan to expand. They're looking at going west. Mr. Gray is east of Martinsdale. So there was a motion made by Westrom to approve the rezoning application from A-1 to C-2. There was three members present at that public hearing, and all members voted in favor of the rezoning application.
Any questions for Miranda? I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk about this project? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Any discussion from the board or comments on this project?
Is the developer here?
Get your name, please, and address.
Ryan Gray, 510 Iowa Street, St. Mary's, Iowa, 50241.
Okay.
Okay. Could you just explain the project a little bit more?
You bet.
And what's going on here? Because I'm reading through the yes, no's on this, of impact, that impact, all this other stuff. So could you just kind of fill us in a little bit more from your perspective?
You bet.
What's going on here?
We bought a farm there off 92. It's 280 acres. I knew this wasn't necessarily ag. It's our office moving into there. So I approached the zoning department. We obviously had a very informal conversation that unfortunately has been misinterpreted by both parties. So I appealed the decision to move to commercial for the simple fact, I was 80% complete with my building. So puts me in limbo. If you wouldn't approve this today, I have a no-use building. So appealed, not because I appealed to commercial. I didn't care one bit, ag or commercial. I didn't go in that day and say, hey, I want ag. I said, here's what I'm building. It's actually 400 square foot smaller than what I presented, and there was no formal plan. I put a three-bedroom, two-bath septic in. I'm a home builder, so I'm thinking, okay, I left plumbing in there. In case I don't own a business someday, I can convert this to a house and sell. It was an honest mistake. It's kind of been rubbed into my face a few times, but it wasn't anything about, you know, environmental health was fine. They've approved it. The flow rate's good. So a lot of miscommunication that makes it look a little bit dirty on my side, I guess. No ill intentions. Again, you guys have a very big boat. I'm 80% complete. I need to finish this. We're, we're five months deep later than we thought, and I'm a couple hundred thousand dollars invested. So the appeal wasn't that I disagree with commercial. The appeal was to save any problems that could happen to where I have a no-use building. It's without an office, it's no use to myself.
Okay. Good job. Okay.
Makes a lot.
Anything else?
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you for that background. Really appreciate it. Any other comments or questions from the Board of Supervisors?
I do have a question here. So just to understand what it is we're doing, we act, if we were to put a motion forward here today. We'd actually be changing the rezoning from A-1 to C-2. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
I'll move that. We rezone the property from A-1 to C-2 as presented to us.
And waive.
Good job.
And what?
Waive the second and third hearing.
Waive the second and. Oh, yeah, and waive the second and third readings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. So that is, that new zoning is approved. Congratulations, Ryan. Thank you for being here, giving us the information.
Makes a difference.
Thank you.
Item number four is a public hearing for review and approval of Deer Meadows' final plot. I'd like to make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. So we're now in public hearing.
Okay, this is, Deer Meadows' final plot was submitted by Eric and Justin Ibeck of 1816 Third Avenue Southeast, Altoona, Iowa. They submitted a six-lot subdivision. All items on the checklist have been completed. There has been approval by the county engineer's office for the construction drawings. That was approved on April 18th of 2023. The city of Des Moines waived their right to review in April of 2023. There was a motion from the zoning commission by Onomus to recommend approval, and all three board members that were present that meeting approved the final plot for Deer Meadows.
Any questions for Miranda? Thank you, Miranda. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk on this final plot? Any other discussion from the board or questions? I'll make a motion to approve the final plot of Deer Meadows.
We have to go out of.
I think we have to close.
Hearing.
I'll make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Rule call.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. We're back into our regular meeting.
Are you ready to approve this?
I think I'm ready. So I'll go ahead and repeat my motion to approve the final plot for Deer Meadows.
Second.
And waive the second and third reading?
And waive the second and third reading.
Yeah, yeah, and waive the second and third.
So I'll make a motion to approve Deer Meadows' final plot, and I'll waive the second and third readings.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. Item number five is to consider the approved ARPA payout for Kiakota Humane Society with possible action.
I would move approval of the Kiakota invoice as received for $125,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second rule call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. Item number six is to consider the approval of usage of ARPA funds for Greenfield Plaza, Crestview Drive Storm Sewer Project with possible action.
Hi, this is one that's been brought up a few times in work sessions. I basically asked Michaela to put it on the agenda, just kind of get it out of limbo and see what you guys think on it. It's for $300,000, which is a $100,000 increase from what was previously approved for ARPA funds because the construction prices came in higher in bidding than we anticipated. The contract was signed for $278,864 and zero cents, and the other $22,000 is going to be used for inspection services from V and K. They're the ones that designed it, and being a little shorter staff now, I think, be better to have them help us inspect this project, so.
I have no problems or questions about the project itself. I do have some questions about the funding source, and I'm going to suggest that in light of some other conversations and meetings we've had in the last couple of months, that maybe we use a different funding source instead of ARPA funds to make up the balance here. So I would suggest that we use the Rural Services Fund to make up the request here. My understanding is that we have adequate resources available there, and it is an appropriate use of those funds. So that would be my suggestion. If I make a motion today to support this, I will do that, but I will change the funding source from ARPA to Rural Services Fund to make up the money. So the project would be funded, but it'd just be a different pot of money we'd use. Any problem with that?
I don't. As long as it comes out of, you know, the board's office, I don't have to make a budget amendment for it.
That's fine. I think we can deal with that.
Absolutely. Okay, I'll second your motion.
Okay. Then I would move approval of the, let's see here, I got to read it correctly.
Item number six.
I would move approval of the Greenfield Plaza project for Crestview Drive Storm Sewer Project as presented to us with the payment of the project to come from Rural Services Fund dollars instead of ARPA.
With the remainder or the entire 300?
I think we can use the entire 300.
So we already paid.
I thought we did part of it already with ARPA, didn't we?
We already paid, I think, about $180-ish.
So then it would be the remainder of the project would be my motion.
Okay, so no more ARPA for that project?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, second.
Is there a way to shift the already paid amount back into the ARPA account in a, and I'm only, you know, is there a appropriate way to do that?
I'd have to ask probably our state auditors to see if that would be appropriate.
Well, I think we'll approve the project, and we'll try, we'll shift what we can to the rural, rural account, and then see if we can do a shift of the 180,000 at some later point, if it's, if there's an easy way to do that and a logical way to do that, appropriate way. So we'll look into that aspect.
Okay.
After, after this approval.
But my motion is, my motion is to approve the project here so we can go forward with it. It's just a matter of which pot of money we use to pay for it. I would prefer that we use the Rural Services Fund to at least pay for the balance of the unpaid amount, and if we could use it for what has already been paid, we'd go ahead and do that as well. I don't know if you would agree with that, as my motion.
Yes, I'd agree with that.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Can we get rule call, please?
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snell.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. Thank you very much, Tim. Next item on the agenda is to approve the usage of ARPA funds for traffic signals in the engineers department with possible action.
This is another ARPA application that's been kind of in limbo for a year or so, so I thought I'd bring it to you. It's trailer-mounted temporaries, traffic signals. You see them a lot of times when roads are reduced to one lane, and it eliminates the need for flaggers, so to help two of our guys go do other things. And our idea is to use it for concrete patching on highways primarily, so we can get away from using calcium and put a stronger mix in the road. And I had gotten a quote, and the quote was for just under 70,000, so I thought I'd bring it back to you and see if we can get approval or just get it off of the, off the list waiting, so.
Again, I'm in favor of this, as we've talked about it. It sounds like a necessary expense. I do have a question. Since it is going to be used on county roads, it would be primarily for county use then, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Not for, so I have a question for our budget director. Would this potentially fall underneath the Rural Services Fund qualification as well?
Because it's for rural roads?
Yes.
I think it would probably, it would fall within the rural, since it's rural funds. I just need to make sure it's not specifically a secondary road. But from looking at the rural fund code, it would appear to fall under their lab expenses from the rural fund. I just need to make sure it's not specific secondary road fund.
Well, first, for the same reasons that we just discussed otherwise, I would consider that we just, yes, I'm for the project. I'm just saying, okay, let's maybe use a different source of resource for that.
I, I would second that with the caveat, if it can be.
If it can be.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
So, okay, I will move approval of the expenditure of seventy thousand dollars for trailer-mounted temporary traffic signals with motion detectors as presented, with the source of funding being Rural Services Fund if possible. If not possible, then we can use ARPA.
All right, second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That motion is approved. And then item number eight is to consider the approval of a three-way stop at the intersection of R fifty-seven highway and eighty-fifth avenue with possible action.
I just handed Mark kind of a map to, so you guys can see what the issue is. Currently, the southbound lane of R fifty-seven is not, does not have a stop sign on it, but the other two legs of that T-intersection do. We've had some concerned citizens call in and request that third stop sign, and our office sees it as a need to, so.
This is where the highway ends.
Yeah, it's a ninety-degree turn that they almost have to stop on anyways, but to have one leg of the three not stop, I think it confuses some people who's not from the area, so. It won't be any harm done by adding a stop sign. It was safety concerns, so.
Any questions for Tim?
No.
No?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. Thank you, Tim. Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider an interfund operating transfer for secondary roads with possible action.
So this fund transfer was budgeted for during our budget time, so it's, and this fiscal year, we decided to do the transfer from the rural fund and no transfer from the general basic fund. So it's one point eight five million dollars in tax revenue transferred from the rural basic, and then an additional one point four million from revenues generated from sources other than property taxes for a total of three point two five million dollar transfer to the secondary road fund from the rural basic fund.
I make a motion to approve. Transfer?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That is approved. Next item on the agenda is to consider the interfund operating transfer for the nutrition department with possible action.
So this is the budgeted transfer amount of twenty thousand dollar for that fund, and that is the full amount that was budgeted for the fiscal year. So that is something that I think we've discussed possibly doing an amendment for this fiscal year as well. But just to start off the fiscal year to do the full transfer, so we have those funds in the nutrition fund balance.
So you asked for a twenty thousand dollar transfer, correct?
And that's the full amount that was budgeted. But I think we'll probably need additional funds from the fiscal year, and we had kind of discussed doing a larger transfer for nutrition, just so we don't have the concern of the fund balance consistently, making sure that the revenues and the expenses are always falling at the same time.
The only question I have is just enough, because it sounded like from our conversations we'd had in the work session that we really needed to have a larger amount.
I don't think it is enough. This is the full amount that's budgeted, so we'll need to do a budget amendment and do more at a later date as soon as that amendment's approved, but this is the full amount we have in the budget for it right now. So I think getting it in there right away is a good idea, and then once we do our budget amendment for whatever amount you guys decide, then we do that amount as soon as we approve it.
I would move approval of the fund transfer to nutrition in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Yeah, I just, I just have a comment for the board of supervisors on this. I think we, I, I'm going to be kind of bringing this whole nutrition department and expense thing forward to the board just to make sure that we have, we understand our all-in costs on this nutrition department because every year it seems like we just don't quite understand what our total costs are, and I totally get that because it's a new department with a new jail. But at this point, being one year in, I just don't feel like I have a real solid understanding of what, what this department's going to be costing and.
Well, I would concur.
You concur. Yeah, I think we just have some more to do.
Based upon the discussions we had in the work session, we're still learning as to what it's really going to cost to operate the jail and the nutrition program in the new format where we're doing a lot of things that were not done before. So here we are in year one, basically learning, and we're going to see how this all turns out here after this first year. But I, I think we're still in the learning curve as to how this is going to shake out. So that's why I asked the question initially, is this enough? And I think what I'm hearing you say, Darren, is that you, you're seeing the same things, that it isn't clear what the true cost is going to be here at this moment, and it's also, I think, going to be reflective of what the changes are with the operations of the jail facility with the population there.
I have gone and sat down with Marty, our nutrition director, and I have a pretty good feel of what the budget is and what the problems are. It's her billing of the sheriff's department in the jail, and then their payment isn't matching up.
Correct.
They need to pay, you know, sooner. So I think once we get that rectified, we won't have this problem anymore. But she has other ideas to streamline things as well as possibly hiring someone to completely go through her department and separate the jail from A G resources and meals and wheels. And so that accounting can be completely separate, so it could be more transparent for everyone. So I, I think that there's processes in place to maybe absolve this problem.
Yeah. Well, I would, I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
This is not criticism.
No.
Right.
What's being done. I think we're in a learning curve here, as I said a moment ago, because of new facilities, new operational process, and we're kind of getting our feet under ourselves to figure out what's going on here, how it's going to work. You know, you can theoretically put it down on paper and say, this is what it should, should work. And sometimes when you actually put it in practice, you learn that things don't always, it doesn't work the same way it does on paper sometimes. And so you have to make adjustments, and so I think we're in that adjustment period right now.
Yeah. Good discussion. I, I agree. I, I think we just have to, have to understand this better. So a year from now, you know, we know what this is going to cost.
And clearly, when we go through the budgeting cycle, you know, six months from now, we'll have a better understanding of it because we've gone through a full year of operation by then and have much better understanding of how things are actually working. So from procedural standpoint then, Megan, could you just walk us back through this again? What's going to happen? What would be the next step? Let's say that we do indicate that we need to make some additional adjustments, which I think I'm hearing us all say is going to happen. How would that happen procedurally?
So the first step would to get it, would be to have it on a budget amendment. I guess our first step would be to decide, speak with Marty and see how much extra funding. And it makes sense that their operational costs have gone up astronomically than what they used to be.
My understanding that participation has also increased quite a bit, as was told to us as well, so, I mean, those have impacted.
These are big factors.
Yep.
If the cost of food and the, and the more people we're feeding, of course, our costs are going to go up.
Yep. So I think just establishing with Marty what's a proper fund balance that will make sure that there's always at least enough funds to cover for when maybe there's a late revenue, the billing comes in later than, just to make sure that there's enough always in that fund balance so that she can still operate even if a payment is received late. So establishing that and then getting a budget, getting it on a budget amendment, and then we'll just do the same process we're doing right now, where you would approve the remainder of that transfer amount.
Okay, so we're going to move the twenty thousand today if, if the board approves that, and then we're going to look at an amendment to reconcile our costs with our budget at a later time, and you'll bring that forward.
Correct.
When you get that all put together?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I believe we have a motion to do the transfer for the nutrition department of twenty thousand, and I believe we had a second. So with that, could we get a roll call, please?
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. So that money will be transferred.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider setting a date for the special election for Warren County Auditor to be held Tuesday, August twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three with possible action.
I'll make that motion.
Did you say you made a motion? I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Could we get roll call, please?
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. Do you have any comments for the, about the election or, you know, procedurally what's going to happen or what our citizens can expect or any, any input at all?
Well, we, we were on the starting line down in the office there. Everybody expected that the petition would be upheld and this decision would be made to listen to the, the citizens of Warren County. There was enough signatures on there, enough people are interested in this, so we are going to begin mailing out some postcards to people to let them know this special election is coming up very quickly. We're working on getting our poll workers set up. We're working on how many precinct polling places that we need to have, and we're going to make this thing happen really, really quick. So it's a lot of work to do. I may need to have some extra helpers come into the office there to go through some of the poll workers to make the phone calls that we need in order to get equal representation and transparency through every one of our polling places there. So it's going to cost a little bit of money to get some extra help and support in here. I'm asking for your support and understanding in that budget for this election here. August twenty-ninth is right around the corner. It is a very fast turnaround to get this many things done, but we're very confident in that we can get this handled. We are going to be bringing in some help from the people that give us, the Unison people that give us our polling machines, and we will have some extra support as well from the state. But I will be having to hire a few other people here to come into the office to help train us up and also give us support with the phone calls that need to be made. But looking forward to it. So I think it's a good decision that you guys made here to go to this special election, and we're going to be successful. We're going to be transparent, and it's going to be with integrity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let us know what you need, okay?
Yeah.
We want this, you have the full, full backing of the board of supervisors on any resource that you need at this point, unless
Thank you.
you come up with something crazy, but
We won't do that.
we're all in on making sure that this is a successful election, and whatever you need, let us know.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, David, very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider correction to previously approved fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four wage adjustment for the information technology department with possible action. Hi, Matt, how are you today?
Good morning.
Good.
This is simply to correct a clerical error for my network administrator to make sure that he gets his COLA and his merit increase, and that's all.
Okay.
I have move approval.
A second.
Solution here.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Can we get roll call, please?
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That motion is approved. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your time. Okay, item number thirteen on today's agenda is to consider appointing the following members to the opioid remediation task force with possible action. I think Crystal has been heading this up and doing a lot of work on this, a very important project. I don't know if you have any comments, or you just want us to move this for approval?
Nope, nope, just approval, thank you.
I would move approval of Joe Carrico, Doug I. Colts, Crystal McIntyre, Joel Stolti, and Betsy Sterma to comprise an opioid remediation task force on behalf of Warren County.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye. That motion is approved. Looking forward to really getting things from that group. The next item on the agenda is to receive and file reports from General Assistance, the Humane Society, the Sheriff's Quarterly Billing Report, and Veterans Affairs. I'll make a motion to receive and file these reports.
Second.
Roll call, please.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
I have a quick question. Do we have any of the folks from any of these agencies here?
General Assistance, no. Humane Society, not seen anybody. Sheriff is not here. And Veteran Affairs, not seen anybody, so. Which is always a goal for us. I mean, that's something we kind of kicked off this year trying to do, is to get our people in here to kind of go over these reports with us, so that's kind of on me. I'll work, work harder on that. The next item on our agenda is a supervisor's report. I'd just like to mention a few things that I'm working on. Number one, in our facilities committee, it's, we've had a couple of meetings to try to determine what the best use of our facilities are. We've been kicking around the idea of selling our West Annex building that's located down on the square. I've actually personally showed that property to a potential buyer, and then we've sat down with the city. I've been, one of, the city of Indianola had made a, an offer on that building, and we've been working through the details on that, and we're continuing to look at the, the structure of that facility. There's some issues with the north wall, and the next meeting will be with the city and the civil engineer that's done our work on that building and kind of sit down and try to identify exactly what needs to do, be done. So we're just in the process, so stay tuned. We had a really nice, and the board of supervisors, my colleagues know that we had a great meeting with zoning. The county's in the process of trying to redefine how we, how we're going to grow. We're trying to implement procedures that'll, that'll execute planned growth strategies, so we grow more incrementally and, and, and more, and more planning around how we grow. And that's really exciting for us, and it's a really big project for our county, and we just had a great meeting. I want to thank the zoning commission for coming in. There's a lot of talent on that board and a lot of knowledge and wisdom, and I've learned a ton from them just in that one meeting. So we're also working on our communications department a little bit. We had some bad news a couple of weeks ago that our communication director had been offered his dream job with federal government, and he's no longer going to be with us as of July fourteenth. So Warren County will soon be posting for the position of communications director. And there's a lot of ideas with a lot of people about what the communications department could potentially look like a year from now or even shorter, and we're trying to pull together a meeting with the board of supervisors to talk about the options, and I think in the next week or two, we'll be ready to do that. So that is my report.
I want to, first of all, just make mention of something that I've observed here recently, and it's very much appreciated. And I want to recognize Auditor Whipple and his staff, in particular, that have been doing the minutes for our efforts here and the timeliness in which they are now being produced, which was different from before. And so I just want to say thank you, and I've been noticing, because they've actually made it into publication up in the Norwalk paper within a week after we've actually had the meeting, so. had the meeting. So I want to thank Auditor Whipple and his staff for the great job that they're doing in terms of transparency for us here in Warren County and the activities we're doing.
If I could just interject, sorry to interrupt you. I don't typically do that, but I'm hearing a lot of the same things from a lot of different entities, from mayors and police chiefs, and our leaders are seeing a difference. And it is, that work doesn't go unnoticed. I mean, when you get, when we're doing things timely and we're getting information out, I think it just bodes well for the county in general. I mean, all the information flowing through here quickly is a big benefit, and we need all the breaks we can get. So we appreciate your hard work. Sorry to interrupt again.
So I just want to...
All 80, by the way, I'm just saying.
Well, I just wanted, and she needs to be, yeah, well, thank you very much for what you're doing, because I hate to say it, but when you have minutes that are six months in arrears, or eight months, whatever the timeline it had been prior to your taking things on, really, it's very much noticed and appreciated. The other thing that I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention is something that has now transpired, and it relates to the mental health services in our county. Central Iowa Community Services has had to reformat its Board of Directors, and our participation as a county is affected by that. The legislature, state legislature, a year ago, took over the funding for the mental health services in the state, and as such, a year later, this passed, immediately passed legislative session, new governing structures were identified as to how that was to happen. So this past month, I received my recognition for service for serving on the Board, because I'm no longer on the Board. Because the Board had been comprised of the 15 counties. Well, that happens to be the total number that can serve on the Board as reconstituted, but only 49% of the membership can be from the counties. And so CICS actually set up a process by which the, all the counties that are part of CICS will, in fact, rotate through that Board at some point. But Warren County is not one of those at this point. So basically, there were seven counties at least, or eight counties that took a pass this time. And then, as the governing structure changes with the terms of office, then the counties that are presently not in the group will be rotated into the group. So I got my service recognition for the six months that I was on the Board. And it was rather interesting to see what's going on there. I just hope that we can address the seriousness of the issue and the services that are being provided. And unfortunately, this is not just an Iowa problem. It's a nationwide issue. We do not have enough people trained and taking on the profession of working with mental health issues. And so we've got a big problem, not only within the state, but within the whole United States. This is a very serious issue. I've got a couple other items I just want to share quickly. We have the General Assistance we talked about here just a moment ago, but we also participate in another group called IMPACT, which is a multi-county area here in central Iowa that deals with persons needing assistance. And there had been some issues that had been raised recently about how IMPACT was going to serve its communities, and some statements around that. They are actually presently revising those statements right now, as a result of some conversations that we have had. And so this last meeting, in fact, they're having that whole statement of who's the target and the group that they're trying to serve. There's a redo on that whole set of statements, which is interesting. Also, another interesting thing that came up as a result of that meeting was a focus on Warren County, of all the statistics. I'm sorry, I don't have those statistics here to hand out to you. I'll share those with you all, so you can see. But there was quite a detailed focus on who is being served by IMPACT in Warren County. And I thought it was very interesting, the timing of those issues, because we had raised some issues of concern as to whether or not Warren County was really being adequately served with our participation in IMPACT. The IMPACT organization is a not-for-profit, and it serves Polk County and City of Des Moines. And I think there was a concern by several, not only Warren County, but other counties, whether or not there was any attention, and actual work being done on our behalf to work with these unfortunate folks that are needing help. So as a result of this, I just find it interesting, the timing of how Warren County was focused on this last month at the meeting specifically. So I'll just share that, and I'll share some additional information that comes from that. This afternoon, I'm going to be working with Tim Hill, and we're going to be going through a survey process on SERPTA, which is a central Iowa transportation group, and we'll be involved in a detailed survey analysis here this afternoon for service on transportation services in the rural areas here of central Iowa. HERDA is also part of this area. And this past month, the MPO, which is the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is specific to transportation development, they did approve a lot of funding for the Icon Trails projects. Now, that doesn't impact Warren County specifically, but it was large sums of money. And as we go forward with transportation-related issues here in central Iowa, our participation in the MPO, and whether or not we get funding for various projects that impact this, is very important. So I just want to make you aware of some of the money that is being spent, and a large sum of money has just now been spent for the Icon Trails project. And there's actually been some news otherwise, and I think local media has actually carried some of the advertisements regarding Icon Trails as well, which is basically the water systems, waterways, for more than just utilitarian purposes. It's for recreational purposes as well. So with that, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you. Be interesting to hear what IMPACT is going to be doing, and what they're...
Yeah, I found it very interesting, the fact that they focused on Warren County specifically. I don't know why that was, but...
I got a pretty good idea.
Maybe, you know, you raise some questions sometimes, and next thing you know, little attention's being paid to you. So maybe that's part of it, I don't know.
Very good.
But I think between IMPACT and our General Assistance programs, you know, that is our effort to assist people in need. And I think, at least I was having some questions, I'd shared that with you prior, as to whether or not there really was work being done here in Warren County to meet the needs of individuals. And it would appear from the statistics that they were sharing with us that there is some assistance being provided. They did point out that the relationship with Warren County is different. They actually have a physical presence here in Warren County, and there was going to be some movement because of some of the other conversations you just mentioned with the real estate and things like that. So they were, brought that up as part of the conversation as well.
Okay. Good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, well, I think my last board report was May 16, so mine's going to encompass from that time forward. We had a property tax refund special meeting. The Board of Supervisors met four times in work sessions. We had two closed sessions for engineer and a budget protest hearing. Attended the St. Mary's City Council meeting, the board meeting. We had two regular meetings since my last board report. And the Board of Supervisors meeting with the Zoning Commission, and then the Board of Supervisors meeting for the auditor interviews. We met, I met with Nutrition Director to go over budget, a special meeting to discuss parking. We had another special meeting to approve claims. I attended, but as a board member, we did not participate in the public hearing for special election for auditor, took over the petition, special to approve claims and firework. Then we had another work session with MSA and the Zoning Commission. I also met with the interim engineer and the assistant to the engineer, and attended the Lacona City Council meeting. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Supervisor McIntyre. Okay, this portion of our meeting for public input. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The Board will not take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meeting law, but may do so in the future. Is there anybody from the public that would like to talk to the Board of Supervisors? Okay. If there's nobody, our next meeting date is July 18, just a week from today, 2023, at 9:30 a.m.
Hey, Eric, sorry, do you mind if I speak?
Not at all. Please go ahead.
No, I'm just going to say, I haven't been in here very long. It's been, what's it, five weeks, I think, since I stepped foot for the first time into a boardroom to even understand what it is that county supervisors do for the citizens of our community. I had heard some things, you know, here and there, that you guys are elected, and you make a lot of business decisions and different things for the county. And to be able to witness it firsthand here for the first time, I'm really starting to get an understanding of what kind of things you guys are going through. And I just want to say that I'm really impressed with your knowledge, the things that you dig into and understand fully enough to make these decisions, not just aye or nay, you're really having these meetings in behind the scenes and getting to know the people of the community, and very open to the discussions and the opinions from other people. It's a tough job. And I just want to say, I saw you guys pay what you get here recently, too, because I had to sign the budgets, right? That's what I do. And it's not enough. I mean, I know that you guys have other things that you could be doing in life, and this takes a lot of your time and effort, and I really appreciate what it is that you do. And now that I've been in here and witnessed it, it's amazing. And I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to really dig in there and understand people's needs, and both sides of it, and taking the flak that you have to take once in a while for decisions that you make. But I've seen you make some pretty great decisions. I know that there's some that you probably don't feel as good about here and there, and I know there's some you're going to make mistakes on, but I really think you're doing a great job, and I appreciate being a part of this right now, being able to witness it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, our next meeting date is July 18, 2023, 9:30 a.m. Thanks for everybody coming to our meeting today. I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please?
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.